Like, hope not all of you is excellent designer.
All right, we'd like to welcome you out tonight and call to order the regular meeting of the West Valley City Council. It is November fifth, twenty twenty-three. I mean, December. I'm even reading it, and it says December, but I, anyway. December fifth. I'm not ready for Christmas, you can tell. At six thirty P M in the council chambers of West Valley City Hall. We have all members of the council present. We have Councilman Christensen and Councilman Fitzie Umanu on Zoom. And then joined at the dais, we have Councilman Whitstone, Councilman Harmon, Councilman Hune, Councilman Norfelt, and myself. We also have our John Flores, our Human Resource Director and Ms. Kamik, our city recorder. Our opening ceremony tonight will be given by Ms. Councilman Hune.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to invite all of you to stand up and do a pledge of allegiance with us. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Hey, thank you. We'll move on to our minutes of November fourteenth, twenty twenty-three. I'll turn those to the council for discussion or emotion.
Motion to approve minutes of November fourteen.
Second.
Thank you. We have motion in a second. All in favor, please say aye.
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 And those pass. We now have our comment period. We will now open our comment period. Comment period is limited to thirty minutes. Any person wishing to speak shall limit their comments to three minutes. Upon recognition from the mayor, please come to the microphone. If you did not sign up, give us your name and address. If you did sign up, just give us your name, please. All comments shall be directed to the mayor. No person addressing the city council during the comment period shall be allowed to speak more than once. Speakers shall not expect to debate with the mayor, the council, or staff. This is time for you to voice your concerns or opinions. Speaker shall refrain from personal attacks against fellow citizens, staff, or members of the council. So we have our signup sheet, and we'll start with speaker one.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Sophia Haztinge. It has been a pleasure for me to run in this race for West Valley City Council at large and meet the wonderful and diverse communities, as many as I could get to, that we have in this city. I do, I mean, I want to make sure I'm here. I also encourage anybody who is not here to come here to speak and let the council know what is going on and happening in their communities when they have a particular issue. So from some of the things that I've noticed while I was out campaigning, I will gladly add my voice as well so that people know that their needs are at least being represented here. So I just want to speak on Resolution eight F on the agenda that is for the, in regards to the agreement between the city and the Utah Department of Transportation. So I just want to make sure for anybody who hasn't driven down forty-one hundred south or tried to get into some of these cul-de-sacs that are immediately off of forty-one hundred south and about thirty-four hundred, thirty-six, any of these adjoining areas, it's very difficult to get in and out because of the dividers that they're having to construct across the traffic. So this kind of makes a dangerous condition. People have to drive way out of their way just to get home or to get to where they're going unless they happen to be turning right. So if they have to go left, it's not going to work for them. So I want to make sure that we are working, when we're working with the UDOT, that they very well understand that we have those needs plus forty-one hundred traffics is also need some traffic adjustment because it gets backed up really incredibly bad. And my observations, it seems to be in association with the beginning on and off the Bangater Highway. So everything looks, it's really, really hard. You have to go, even Google says to go south, to go north, to get around that mess. So again, thank you, Sophia Haztinge.
Thank you. Speaker two. Perez?
I guess you're to listen to what's going on with the UDOT's possibly acquisition of some property that surplus.
Okay.
So who has information on that?
You'll just get it during the actual meeting. Okay. Speaker three.
Yeah, I'm here for agenda number nine, so I'm sorry for your signing that.
So just for your information, there will be no public comment at that time. So if either one of you want to speak on it now, no?
I'm just here to answer some questions if there are questions.
Okay. All right. Is there anyone else that did not have a chance to sign up that would like to speak? Please give us your name. I think we have your address on file.
See if I can remember my address. Some V-Soc five four one nine West Lockwood Drive, West Valley City. I'm here to tonight about your ordinance, you're going to be voting on and raising the fees. I have no problem with the fees being raised, but there's a few things that need to be done with the fees being raised. One thing is the area needs to be clean when the people are coming in to take it. And if it's a multiple rental day, it should be cleaned in between. There should be parking spots assigned. You go to any one of these parks on Saturdays and Sundays, they're all full. If I'm paying a hundred, hundred and fifty bucks for a pavilion, there should be a minimum of six spots reserved. And even that's not going to be enough, but at least make that part of the package. And then also the trash should be emptied. They should have clean empty cans. A lot of times on the Sunday events, that doesn't happen. That's all I have.
Thanks. Thank you. Was there anyone online? Okay. Seeing no one else in the audience, we will close the public comment and turn it to our interim assistant city manager sometime in the future, Mr. Flores.
I have no comments. Thank you.
Okay, to the council, any comments? Okay, thank you. We will now move on to our ordinances, and we will begin with ordinance twenty-three dash forty-four, Mr. Flores.
Yes, thank you. This is an ordinance to, an ordinance change to amend section one to one oh seven of the West Valley City Municipal Code to update certain parks and rec fees. I would like to note, as requested, the ordinance was updated to clarify the half-day use of the soccer and softball fields is before two P M.
Okay, thank you. All right, to the council, any questions, discussion, or emotion? Would you like information from parks if they think the recommendations from the citizen would be necessary?
I was actually going to ask a question about that, based on Mr. Vsoc's comment, because I've rented pavilions at other, in other cities as well that did not come with reserved spaces. Is there precedent for that, or is that common in other cities?
So Ms. Young, would you come to the podium, I guess?
In my experience, it hasn't either, but I thought it was a compelling comment, so I thought I'd ask.
Yeah, it is not, it's not common to have reserved parking for pavilions. Obviously, all the parks are very multi-use, and so it is, it is kind of a, especially on busy Saturday and Sundays, it is, could be a challenge to find parking. Centennial Park specifically has plenty of parking. Most of the parks do. A couple of the ones, we try not to have multiple events. We don't have like a soccer league at Parkway when we have reservations because it does take up a lot of parking for the other events. But ultimately, we want them to be gathering places and so reserving parking, you know, then you have the enforcement challenge. But I, it's not standard to have reserved parking for pavilions.
Okay. I know in the past I've gotten calls about not being able to park and unload your car, even though you've paid for the pavilion. So.
We could probably designate one for loading, do something like that where it's loading and unloading. And again, it's kind of an enforcement. If somebody has parked there when they're, when they're showing up to do that, then, you know, it would be parking enforcement or PD that would be contacted for that. But we could certainly do that.
Okay, would that take a amendment to the resolution or ordinance, or could it just be?
No, it could just be done. That doesn't have anything to do with the, with that. But we could just make that part of our, our practice if that's the direction.
Okay. And then the other concern was if we rent it out twice in one day, making sure that the garbage cams are emptied in between, or we have clean ones there so they can take care of their garbage.
And that's exactly why we don't reserve them more than once a day, because we don't have the manpower to go in and clean them in between. There are people who see that the pavilion's reserved at two o'clock, and so they'll stay there in the morning and have, have lunch or something and not clean up after themselves. But we do clean them every day, or we have park caretakers that clean them every day. They just don't, we don't reserve them twice a day for that, for that exact reason. We do pick up garbage a couple of times a week. It's picked up on Tuesdays and Saturdays, so they're, they're empty on Saturday, but to have them empty again on Sunday would, would be a huge cost to have the garbage picked up at all the parks on Sunday as well. Generally, the garbage cans aren't full. There obviously are times that it is when there are big events and things, but for the most part, the, the garbages are collected on Tuesday and Saturday unless we have big special events like, like West Fest or something like that, then we add extra pickups. But there's, there's a cost associated with doing that.
Okay. Is the cost offset by the rental?
We could look at that. That would be something I'd work with Public Works on what the cost, the cost is to add those extra pickups. I'm sure it's, and again, you know, it might just be one or two parks that we do have a lot more rentals. But we can certainly look into that and see with the extra revenue for the, for that, we could certainly look at that.
Okay.
Or even if we just added some extra cans to some of those pavilions.
Yeah. And they are all over the park in a lot of areas, and we can, we can certainly have them make sure they drag some, some freshmen's over there each, each rental day as well.
Okay.
Yeah, certainly we can do that, even if we don't add an extra garbage pickup. So I can report, report back to you on that, what the, what the cost is. And if that's something that's easily covered, then we'll just add an extra pickup on Sunday, assuming that the, our garbage contractor would do that on a Sunday.
Yeah. Well, and probably if there's a rental.
Yeah.
There's probably not a need if there isn't one.
Yeah. And most Sundays there are in, especially in Centennial Park. Not all the parks have them on Sundays, but Centennial Park is reserved most Saturdays and Sundays in the summer.
Okay. The one I got complaints about last year was Parkway.
Parkway.
Yeah.
Parkway's a hard one. We do have a lot of people in that neighborhood that use it. And so when there is a reservation, again, we clean it in the morning, and then by the time they come, there, there might be, you know, people in it that we have to send someone over, our parks on-call person has to go over and say, these people have it reserved, because that's not always a a positive interaction. But for the most part, people are usually pretty good about that. But we do have the occasional people that say, I'm not leaving. Make me. So then we have to either get PD or, or something to come out and help us with enforcement, but.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Any other questions? All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Motion to approve ordinance twenty-three dash forty-four. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and second, Ms. Kamik.
Councilman Fitzie Umanu.
Aye.
Councilman Whitstone.
Yes.
Councilman Harmon.
Yes.
Councilman Hune.
Aye.
Councilman Christensen.
Christensen, yes.
Councilman Norfelt.
Yes.
And Mayor Ling.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, thank you. We'll now go to Resolution twenty-three dash one eighty-three, Mr. Flores.
Thank you. This is a resolution to award a contract to Acme Construction in an amount of just over one point five million for the construction of Sunset Hills Park at sixty-four twenty South Ocker Mesa Drive, which will be funded by park impact fees.
Thank you. All right, to the council for discussion or a motion?
Motion to approve Resolution twenty-three dash one eight-three.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second, Ms. Kamik.
Councilman Norfelt.
Yes.
Councilman Christensen. Councilman Christensen. Councilman Hune.
Yeah.
Yes.
Councilman Harmon.
Yes.
Councilman Whitstone.
Yes.
Councilman Fitzie Umanu. And Mayor Ling.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. All right, we'll now move to Resolution twenty-three dash one eighty-four, Mr. Flores.
Yes, this is a resolution to appoint John Evans to interim city manager and John Flores to interim assistant city manager with the upcoming retirement of city manager Wayne Pyle.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we'll turn it to the council for discussion or a motion.
I thought it was foot flopped. No? Oh, you're right. You're right. Motion to approve.
Second.
John and John.
John and John, yeah.
Yep, John Square.
Yeah.
All right, Ms. Kamik.
Councilman Fitzie Umanu.
Aye.
Councilman Whitstone.
Yes.
Councilman Harmon.
Yes.
Councilman Hune.
Yes.
Councilman Christensen.
Christensen, yes.
And Councilman Norfelt.
Yes.
And Mayor Ling.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. We'll now move to Resolution twenty-three dash one eighty-five, Mr. Flores.
Yes, this is a resolution to recertify the West Valley City Justice Court by the Utah Judicial Council and the Justice Court Standards Committee. Every four years, the justice court must be recertified by these entities to continue operating.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I'll turn it to the council for discussion or a motion.
Motion to approve Resolution twenty-three dash one eight-five.
Second.
We have a motion and second, Ms. Kamik.
Councilman Norfelt.
Yes.
Councilman Christensen.
Christensen, yes.
Councilman Hune.
Yes.
Councilman Harmon.
Yes.
Councilman Whitstone.
Yes.
Councilman Fitzie Umanu.
Aye.
And Mayor Ling.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. We'll now move to Resolution twenty-three dash one eighty-six, Mr. Flores.
This is a resolution to approve the execution of an M O U with the Utah Cyber Center to utilize security software licenses purchased by the state. As requested, we looked into the cost to purchase the software on our own, and this M O U will save us approximately eighty-five thousand per year.
Great. Okay, thank you. Turn it to the council for discussion or a motion.
Motion to approve Resolution twenty-three dash one eighty-seven.
Eighty-six?
Eighty-six.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second, Ms. Kamik.
Councilman Fitzie Umanu.
Aye.
Councilman Whitstone.
Yes.
Councilman Harmon.
Yes.
Councilman Hune.
Yes.
Councilman Christensen.
Yes, Christensen.
Councilman Norfelt.
Yes.
And Mayor Ling.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Okay, we'll now move to Resolution twenty-three dash one eighty-seven, Mr. Flores.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a resolution to authorize the city to enter into a mutual aid agreement for emergency services with other fire departments to provide support to one another as needed.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I'll turn it to the council for discussion or a motion.
A motion to approve Resolution twenty-three dash one eighty-seven.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second, Ms. Kamik.
Councilman Norfelt.
Yes.
Councilman Christensen.
Yes.
Councilman Hune.
Yes.
Councilman Harmon.
Yes.
Councilman Whitstone.
Yes.
Councilman Fitzie Umanu.
Aye.
And Mayor Ling.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. We'll now move to Resolution twenty-three dash one eighty-eight, Mr. Flores.
This resolution approves a betterment agreement with UDOT for improvements to Bangater Highway at forty-seven hundred south in the amount of two million dollars coming from the general fund.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we'll turn it to the council for discussion or a motion.
Motion to approve Resolution twenty-three dash one eighty-eight.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second, Ms. Kamik.
Councilman Fitzie Umanu.
Aye.
Councilman Whitstone.
Yes.
Councilman Harmon.
Yes.
Councilman Hune.
Yes.
Councilman Christensen.
Yes.
Councilman Norfelt.
Yes.
And Mayor Ling.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Now go to Resolution twenty-three dash one eighty-nine, Mr. Flores.
Yes, this is a resolution authorizing the execution of a lease agreement with Salt Lake City to install storm drain infrastructure near seventy-two hundred west and twenty-one hundred south.
Thank you. To the council for discussion or a motion.
Motion to approve Resolution twenty-three dash one eight-nine.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second, Ms. Kamik.
Councilman Fitzie Umanu.
Aye.
Councilman Whitstone.
Yes.
Councilman Harmon.
Yes.
Councilman Hune.
Yes.
Councilman Christensen.
Yes.
Councilman Norfelt.
Yes.
And Mayor Ling.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Well, now moved on to our new business. We have application P U D two twenty-twenty-three. Turn the time to Mr. Flores.
Thank you. This is an application for final plat approval for the Mountain View Microflex P U D located at fifty-seven eighteen west, thirty-five hundred south. The building is currently under construction, and this will create fifty-nine individual commercial condominium units.
Okay, thank you. I'll turn it to the council now for discussion or a motion.
Make a motion to approve application P U D two dash twenty-twenty-three.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second, Ms. Kamik.
Councilman Norfelt.
Yes.
Councilman Christensen.
Yes.
Councilman Hune.
Yes.
Councilman Harmon.
Yes.
Councilman Whitstone.
Yes.
Councilman Fitzie Umanu.
Aye.
And Mayor Ling.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
All right, now we'll move on to Resolution twenty-three dash one ninety, Mr. Flores.
Earlier this afternoon, we posted the final results of the municipal general election held on November twenty-first, twenty-twenty-three, and this action will formally adopt those results.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I'll turn it to the council for discussion or a motion.
I want to say a few words, and then I will make a motion for this one. I just want to say thank you to residents in my district. It's a top race, but they stick with me, and they trust me, and I will keep that faithfully, and I will represent them well for the next four years. And also I wanted to say thank you to Mayor Landon, and she's willing to endorse me in this race, and I appreciate it very much. So right now, just get back to work, and we have a lot of things to do for the next four years. And I want to say here's a motion to approve the new business. Let's see. Yep, twenty, twenty-three dash one ninety.
Second that motion with the added commendation for everyone who decides to stick their name out or put their hat in the ring primaries and into the generals. And as usual, we always encourage anyone to run for office who would like to represent the interests of our community. So thank you to everyone who was involved and everyone who voted and those who hopefully will register and keep continuing to vote. So I'll second that motion.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion and a second, Ms. Kamik.
Councilman Fitzie Umanu.
Aye.
Councilman Whitstone.
Yes.
Councilman Harmon.
Yes.
Councilman Hune.
Yes.
Councilman Christensen.
Yes.
Councilman Norfelt.
Yes.
And Mayor Ling.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Okay, we have our consent agenda, and I'm going to turn the time over to Mr. Flores. We have one item J that has been added to our agenda.
Correct. Yes, so we have added one additional item, Resolution twenty-three dash two zero zero. This is the final right-of-way needed for the Crosstown Trail project, and we were hoping to get it approved before the end of the year so that engineering can get started on advertising the project. This item, as well as the rest on today's agenda, are all typical purchase agreements, deeds, and easements.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I'll turn the consent agenda over to the council. You can either take them one at a time or all at once. So to you for discussion or a motion.
I move for approval of all of the items of the consent agenda.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Kamik.
Councilman Norfelt.
Yes.
Councilman Christensen.
Yes.
Councilman Hune.
Yes.
Councilman Harmon.
Yes.
Councilman Whitstone.
Yes.
Councilman Fitzie Umanu.
Aye.
And Mayor Ling.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. All right, as a reminder, this is our final regular meeting for the year. The December twelfth regular meeting has been canceled, and our next regular meeting will be January second, twenty-twenty-four. After this meeting, we will have our R D A meeting, and so we only have one more action item at this point.
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And we stand adjourned. For you.
Thank you, Mayor, for reminding me this. Well, we're called to order a special redevelopment meeting tonight, and it's right now, it's seven P M, and we hold this meeting at the thirty-six hundred south Constitution Boulevard. It was really city, Utah, eight four one one night. And recently, we have an opening ceremony already, and also road call, we already done. Now we have approval of minutes, so we are going to pass it to the council for discussion and motion.
I remove for approval of the minutes of June twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-three.
So we have a motion, we have a second, so all favors on this motion, please say aye.
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 Thank you. Take it on. So motion passes unanimously. Public hearings, we have one item tonight to discuss about, I will turn it over to Mr. Flores. Oh, public hearing, yeah. I am excited today because I didn't hear in about December without having any meetings, so I'm just so excited. Well, we have a public hearing, and I will get that to Mr. Flores, and then I will have open the public hearing to people to come here and have the thing to say.
Thank you. This resolution would declare that the acquisition of surplus property owned by UDOT for properties located along the twenty-one hundred south frontage road is for a valid public use. There's no financial obligation with this action. It simply allows the city to engage in conversations with UDOT to study a potential purchase.
Thank you so much, Director John Flores. And now I would open the open hearing. So anyone wants to come up to microphone and speak about this item. The resolution is twenty-three dash zero five. Does anyone on the Zoom?
No, sir.
Oh, okay. So I'm going to close this, open here, and I will turn over to the council to have a discussion of the motion for this item.
Just a procedural curiosity question, but it seems like the authorization just to investigate the potential for something is sort of an administrative task. Is there a reason, or is there a criteria for why this would come for a formal vote to approve? Task is, is there a reason or is there a criteria for why this would come for a formal vote to approve?
So, yeah, this is really just, uh. For us to, uh. Initially state that we may be interested.
Correct.
But doesn't require any further action really gives us the opportunity to look into the property.
Cool. Yeah, I'm cool with it. I was just wondering, you know, it seemed kind of routine, so I was just wondering if. Yeah, all right.
And make the motion to approve resolution twenty-three dash zero five.
Second.
So have a motion, have a second. We'll turn over to, uh, Nico Kamak for recorder.
Mister Fitzsimmonu.
Aye.
Mister Whitstone.
Yes.
Mister Harmon.
Yes.
Ms. Ling.
Yes.
Mister Christensen.[1700.11]